Okay, thanks folks, please be upstanding.
Almighty God, we who are gathered together in council pledge ourselves to work in harmony for the welfare and development of our rural city. Guide us, we pray, in our deliberations. Help us to be fair in our judgement and wise in our actions, so that prosperity and happiness shall be the lot of our people. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we are meeting and pay my respects to their elders, both past and present. Be seated, please. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this special meeting of council. I welcome councillors, management and staff, and those members of the public who are viewing this live stream online and/or watching this recording, or will be watching this recording at a later time. As part of our efforts to contain the spread of COVID-19, and in accordance with section 395 of the Local Government Act, this council meeting is being livestreamed on council's website, and is unfortunately not open to the public to attend in person. The audio and video recordings will be published on council website within 48 hours after the meeting concludes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, present today we have councillor Monica, councillor Healy, councillor Sedgman, councillor Eccle, councillor Milne, councillor Sorillo, councillor Brown and myself, councillor Clements. Councillor Paul is currently on leave without absence. Now, I have to take a mover to accept councillor Paul's leave without absence, do I have a mover? Councillor Sorillo. Second, councillor Brown. Does anyone wish to speak against that motion? Move to the vote, it was in favour. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is item 5.1, which is allocation of the 2020/2021 budget amount for Mildura Airport Instrument Landing System. I have a conflict of interest in that I work for a tenant of the airport, so I would ask, in the absence of councillor Paul, councillor Milne, to step forward and chair the meeting. If anyone has any objection? No, we don't normally go to a vote for that. Okay, thank you councillor Milne. Don't forget to call me back.
Okay, well, wait till councillor Clements leaves the room. Thank you, we'll go straight on with item 5.1, and that's the allocation of the 2021 budget amount for Mildura Airport Instrument Landing System. Recommendation at point two there, that council approve the inclusion of $1 million in the draft annual budget 2020 to 2021, as council's contribution to the installation of an instrument landing system, ILS, at Mildura Airport. Have I got a mover for that motion? Councillor Brown, have I got a second? Councillor Eccle? Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Thank you. I'll ask councillor Brown to open the debate, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, but it's going to be terribly brief, we've been over all this ground before. It's certainly a project that enhances the operation facilities of the airport, it makes it better for emergency landings, and we've had two million contributed by the feds, and I just added one million for the airport, and of course from council, a million, this is what we're doing, and I think it's definitely a constructive move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Yes, well, this has certainly been a lot of work in regards to this opportunity, and hopefully an investment in the future of our airport. Initially, it was the foresight of the former Maple CEO, Bill Burke, and the staff, and the board worked tirelessly to work towards providing the ILS facility through an application process to the federal government. I don't think people realise that one of the instances that brought about the deep consideration for the ILS wasn't just the possible training school that could be based at our airport, because at the particular time, there were Qantas, Virgin, they were all looking for places to have their training facilities. But the community will recall that there were two Boeing 737s aircraft diverted to Mildura with, and I think I was right in saying, about 250 passengers between the two planes, and there was a potential disaster, because at Mildura Airport, there was an unexpected fog conditions, and these planes had been diverted from other airports to come to Mildura, both of them. And with the limited airport technology and the lack of fuel, following two aborted landing approaches by these planes, by these jets, the planes were committed to land on the third approach in blinding conditions. And it was stated that if that first plane that came in crashed, then it was inevitable that the second one would come down because of the issue of no fuel. So, at that particular time, an ILS at the Mildura Airport would have prevented this incident from happening. And I'd like to say, in addition, that council appreciates the commitment of the federal government in their advocacy for this equipment and investment for the Mildura Airport, and also the local member, who, local federal member, who fought tirelessly to get this addition to the airport. So, Mr Chair, I find that the investment is worthwhile for the future of the Mildura Airport, and the economic gains that that will provide to the local community into the future.
Thank you councillor Eccle. Councillor Monica speaking against the motion.
Thank you councillor Milne. The reasons I'm voting against the ILS, the ILS has only recently come out of confidential, which I think has put community members at a disadvantage for putting their case forward in regard to having their say. I don't believe there's been a complete environmental assessment done on the ILS, and how that would work and affect the community around the airport and the precinct of Mildura. I believe that eventually, with the nature of the ILS and the training circuits that are done there, there will be an eventual downturn in real estate in Mildura because of the possibility of 600 industrial-scale pilots buzzing around within 5.6 kilometres of the airport precinct in Mildura. I think we've got a great opportunity to give the community time to weigh up the positives and the negatives. The community consultation, I believe, was lacking. I think we were caught on the hop with the federal money, and I appreciate that 100%, but to only have it come out and not have the community fully embrace the positives that may come out of the ILS, and I'm not debating the positives of having the ILS there for safety, it's just the process, and the need of an environmental assessment, so people truly understand what a certain amount of planes will continue to do while they buzz around within 5.6 kilometres of our wonderful airport. As I said, I'm concerned at how quickly the $2 million came, and we had to operate quickly to get that done, and I think we were wrong-footed. It's much needed money to come into the community, but it's not always about money, and I believe after our 18 months' work on the water motion we had, we offered it to the community to discuss it. I know we're doing that now, but it is very, very quick. Considering we're 100% shareholder of Maple, I suggest that we could utilise the money more appropriately for COVID funding right now, and put it in hold somewhere, or instead somewhere, until the consultations about the environment and the conditions there, and the community's feedback are met. I didn't do my due diligence. The SED study is a study clearly on economics, which is fantastic, and it is a good report, and it does talk about the benefits. I'm just very concerned that our community hasn't had a depth of response that they needed for such a dramatic change in the airport. And I'll just read one final piece from the study done in 2017, if I can find it. "Community consultation and engagement. Significant levels of community engagement will need to be undertaken to ensure contentious issues are properly managed. Examples of airport development being poorly managed have resulted in major community backlash, and ultimately creates additional time and cost for developers and associated businesses. The opportunity with this development is that the benefits for the city are widespread, and therefore this positive message can be harnessed as part of the community development engagement process, which I think has been lacking. The opportunity is to secure broad community support for the project, mitigating some of the community-related risks that have identified." They're my reasons, I don't think that's happened. Thank you very much for letting me have my say this evening.
Thank you councillor Monica. Any other councillor wish to speak for the motion? Thank you councillor Sorillo.
Thank you. No, I think we're getting a bit confused between the ILS and the flying school, so we were all there in the chamber that night when we voted on this, initially to pledge the $1 million in principle, if the support of the federal money was coming. At that time, in my conscience, I was voting on it based on the ability to ever, if we really want to take the air, if we really, one was the safety, but secondly, if we ever want to take that airport to the next level, what is the, you know, we're going to need an instrument like this, forgetting if there's a flying school there or not, to attract bigger planes, more passengers on the planes, more flights, these things are, you know, these instruments are required, maybe not all the time, but in the, like, look at this morning's fog conditions, you know? The fog comes out of nowhere, conditions like that happen, and it increases safety for all passengers to and fro immensely. So, there's an opportunity there where we've got, you know, the opportunity to only spend 25% of the $4 million that come out of council, and with the help of the federal government, another $2 million contribution. I think the argument, we need to keep it to the actual ILS, not about the air flying school that hangs off it, because at the end of the day, they are a tenant, and if we decide, well, you know, if the community decides that that's something that we don't want here, I think that's another discussion to have for another day. So, I think, I'm just, my opinion, the ILS itself, and the value for money on this motion, I'm fully supportive of it, so thank you.
Thank you councillor Sorillo. Any other councillor want to speak against the motion? For the motion? Councillor Brown, if you'd like to sum up, please.
Yes, I'll be pretty brief, I think Anthony did a pretty good job then. As far as I'm concerned, it's a real asset for the airport, and the flight school should not even be entering into this asset for the airport, it's a totally separate business plan. We're not involved in that, but we are involved in getting the assets for the airport, and in fact, the federal government support us so well, I think it was too good an opportunity for the safety of the travellers in the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown, I'll put the motion to the vote, those for? Those against? Motion is carried. Could we have the mayor back, please? He probably thinks we've forgotten. Thank you councillor Clements, or Mr Mayor, the motion was passed.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen, we'll now move on to item 5.2, which is the big-ticket item for the night. The adoption of the draft annual budget for 2020/2021, and draft fees and charges schedules for 2020/2021 for advertising. So, the recommendation is that council authorised the chief executive officer to give public notice of the draft annual budget for 2020/2021, in accordance with section 129 of the Local Government Act, that it authorises the chief executive officer to give public notice of the draft fees and charges schedule in accordance with the Local Government Act, and recognise the full council pursuant to section 223 of the Local Government Act consider any submissions on any proposal or proposals contained in the draft annual budget 2020/2021, or fees and charges scheduled 2020/2021. Do I have a mover for that motion? We'll go with councillor Monica. Have a second? Councillor Healy? Does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor, we'll go with councillor Sedgman first. Okay, so we'll open the debate, we'll start with councillor Monica, please.
Thank you, Mayor Clements. The base average rate rise by 2% in line with the order by the Minister for the Local Government in December of 2019 is in accordance with the fare-go rates system, the FGRS. All of Victoria's 79 councils have been operating under the caps since the 1st of July 2016. Each year, the Minister for Local Government sets a cap on rate increases based on the period's Consumer Price Index and advice from the Essential Services Commission. The decision must be made by the 31st of December each year to apply the rates in that following financial year. As a direct outcome of the council's ongoing effort to identify savings in a financially sustainable manner, there has been a decline in rate increases, and I'll repeat that, there's been a decline in rate increases from a high of 6% in 2012 and 2013, recognising the community's capacity to pay. Council commenced work to reduce rate increases prior to the introduction of the rate cap, and I commend our council for doing that. For every $100 in taxes paid by Victorian residents, only $3.50 is collected through the rates by the local government. The remaining $96.50 is paid directly to the states and to the federal government. The preparation of the budget is influenced by the following external factors. The federal assistance grant payments have been 50% forward-paid this year. There is now an annual occurrence, and 50% advance payment will be assumed to be received annually each year in June. This is merely a timing difference, thank you for that, and has no overall effect on council's budget or grant allocations. The freezing of the federal assistance grants funding for three years from 2014 to 2017, it is estimated to have cost our council a cumulatively $18.3 million over the 10-year period from 2000, would have cost us from 2015 to 2024. That would be an amount of money we could very much deal with right now. The Victorian Government has introduced a cap on rate increases from 16 to 17. The cap for the 2021 year has been set at 2%, which is based on the statewide CPI forecast for the year. Preparation for the 2020 and 21 annual budget has been undertaken during unprecedented times, in the face of both a health and economic crisis as a result of the global COVID-19 pandemic. I reckon people are a bit sick of hearing that at this stage, aren't they? Council has taken these significant local and global impacts into account when preparing this budget, including future challenges and the potential for continuing economic uncertainty. Councils across Australia raise approximately 3.5% of the total taxation collected by all levels of government in Australia. In addition, councils are entrusted with the maintenance of more than 85% of all local roads across Australia, and more than 30% of all Australian public assets, including bridges, parks, footpaths, drainage and public buildings. I just want to read that again. "Councils are entrusted with the maintenance of more than 85% of all local roads across Australia, more than 30% of public assets, including bridges, parks, footpaths and public buildings, out of that 3.5% of taxes collected from the nation. We always hit above our weight, every council, not just ours. This means that a large proportion of council's income must be allocated to the maintenance and replacement of these valuable public assets, in order to ensure the quality of public infrastructure to be maintained at satisfactory levels." Also, the fire services levy's in there, and my colleague councillor Milne's favourite, the EPA levy, is in there again this year, and I think it's about $700,000, and that varies in regard to the volume of waste that comes into our landfill. Oh, sorry. At this stage, I think I'll leave it at that, I could go on a little bit longer, that's information prepared by our councillors, and I think every council has an opportunity to have great staff like that, give them that information, to actually show the lay of the land, that who does the heavy lifting when it comes to supplying services and asset renewal in rural Victoria and Australia.
Thank you councillor Monica. Just before I throw to councillor Healy, I suppose for the benefit of the public, they probably want to know what we're debating, the draft budget actually recommends a 2% rate increase in line with the government's fair rates policy, and that money plus another $300,000 set aside for a $1.5 million recovery fund, community recovery fund, and that's what we're debating at the moment. Councillor Healy?
Thank you. I wish I could vote for a zero rate increase, but my remit here is not to be popular, it's to be fiscally responsible. Also, in my responsibility as a councillor, in the last week, I've spoken to a number of local businesses, and I've conducted polls in the last six weeks throughout my social media to get a sense of what is the right decision to make tonight. The local businesses I spoke to, I talked about, that if we give a zero rate increase, it amounts to less than a dollar a week saving for pretty much all of us, or particular residents. But if we have the 2% increase, which is really just covering the increase in the cost of living, the CPI, then we can give a much-needed post-pandemic recovery package to our community, and we can figure out where we spend that $1.5 million once we figure out where that help is desperately needed. That's what I've heard from the business people I've spoken to today, when I explained it to them, what zero increase means in their actual pocket, and what a 2% increase means to our community to spend significantly on post-pandemic recovery. I know that one councillor has said zero increase and the $1.5 million as well, well, you can't have your cake and eat it too, we can't do both. People talk extensively about how high our rates are, and I think it needs to be really explained by our media department, by our council, why we pay such high rates compared to our counterparts in the city. Let's take, for instance, my friend in Fitzroy, who pays much less than me. In Fitzroy, they have one municipal council building, we have two. They have 40 caves of roads, we have about 400, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these stats, 4,000, there you go, add another zero. They have one town hall, we have a couple. They have one swimming pool, we have six. They have one library, we have five, four? So, all I'm saying is, as councillor Monica said, we are responsible for the upkeep of these things, and I think if people have a problem with how high our rates are, take it up with the federal or the state government, who should be supporting us to take care of all this infrastructure, including all the roads. So, that's pretty much why I'll be supporting this budget tonight, as is, in finishing, because my remit is to be responsible, not popular. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy, we'll now move to the first of the against speakers, councillor Sedgman, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This budget process has been quite lengthy and in-depth, and it's been very thorough, and I'd like to firstly say thank you to Chris and his team for doing such a great job in providing the information to the councillors, in showing the financial position on which council is in, and the financial position that we would be in moving forward. I believe, from the information that we've been supplied, that council is, we are a very strong council, we are a strong council in a number of ways, but we also are a strong council financially. And in these very unprecedented times, the community is hurting. I know it's not a lot of money that we're talking about in the big picture, but at the end of the day, I believe we're sending the wrong message to the community. Everyone is hurting, and I think council needs to be able to bear some of that burden as well. We have been able to find some savings within the budget documents that have been presented, and that's where the $1.5 million community recovery plan has come from. So, you know, to our staff's credit, they've provided us with the best financial position based on the basic accounting practices. Here, we have the opportunity as councillors to bring the social impact of a budget towards in the debate, and at this stage, I believe that for this particular year, it's unusual in so many ways, that I think we're in a position where we can actually go with a zero rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sedgman.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor. Can I ask a question at this stage?
Yes.
I think that it might be prudent to ask the question in regards to the suggestion of a no rate increase would mean on this community, and would mean on our budgetary processes going forward at this late stage. As councillor Sedgman has insisted that we, and he's right, we have gone through a pretty vigorous process, and to come to this stage and be looking at an alternative, I think that we need explanation from our management, and their expertise in their particular area of what that means for the community.
Yes.
Mr Mayor, I believe councillor Eccle is trying to use the staff to actually enter the debate. I mean, we are councillors, we've been given all the information, and we've been given a motion that we have a right to debate. I don't think we need more information called in as really a debating point. I think that's what we're talking about now. We've got a motion in front of us, whether we agree or disagree, and that's what we've got to decide.
Point of order, Mr Mayor. I, I feel that I'm not bringing the staff in.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, I after all, I'm the point of order, you can't point of order for point of order, but I appreciate. Yeah, if it's councillor Millen in relation to your point of order, that's not the basis of a point of order, you probably know that. But in relation to the question itself, I think that we have a, a public gallery in the sense that we have people watching and they have a right to have an understanding of the circumstances and so I'll allow that question to be asked and I'll ask Mr Parham to respond, please.
Through you, Mayor. So, so the, the, the impact of a 0% rate increase is, is somewhat complex in that, for example, if it was a 0% rate increase this year and then in subsequent years it reverted back to, for example, the 2.0% rate increase, so we just took this year as a special year, then the cumulative impact of a 0% rate increase just for this one year would be approximately $13 million over time.
Mr Mayor.
Councillor Sedgman.
I thought councillor Echol's question was what it would happen to the process from now as regard to timing, not so much about the impact within the budget itself.
No, that's not correct councillor Sedgman, the question was directly what the impact would be on a zero rate increase. Have you finished, Mr Parham?
If I could just say that the, the impact of a 0%, a 0% rate increase is approximately $1.2 million as of once of this year, but as I mentioned, the impact over time would be approximately $13.7 million.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak for the motion? Against councillor Millen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'll just cover that $13 million. It is an impact of one year we're talking about as if there's a nil increase and that's $1.2 million. I guess you could say over time, if it saves or if it's $13 million, well, that's a little bit more than just a couple of dollars for every person, so it actually does make a big impact on people's pocket over a long time. But next year, we could have inflation, it could be a 5% rate rise because of inflation, it could be 1%. We just don't know what we're dealing with in the future and if council actually needs more money, we can go to the government for some extra funding. The reason that I'm not supporting the motion is, yes, I've had all the information, but I'm also, if anybody knows me, I don't make decisions to be popular. I'm quite happy with being abused and yelled at and letters written about and things written in the paper, so I actually make my decisions because I actually believe in what I'm doing. I'm really not scared about being abused. But this year, I'm doing it because I believe it's being responsive and compassionate to our community and it is only a small amount, but we've got a lot of people out in the community that are hurting and I, I think it's about sending a message back to the community that we actually care and yes, it is only a small amount and it's, it's $1.2 million, it's a small amount for everybody. I would also like to see the $1.5 million kept in there and yes, we can do it, we just have to change the budget. It's not as if, if you knock the 2% off, then you're going to run a major deficit budget. No, you go and rejig the budget and you make it fit and you can do that, we've got choices. You know, we're, we're looking at the Mildura South Sporting Complex, that originally was supposed to cost us, I've got it here, our input into that was going to be $4.6 million. Now, it's heading north of, or south, south, of $12 million, but we took that on at $4.6, but we found the extra money and we can do that. Our staff are very, very good and by not supporting this, I, I'm not having a go at the work that the staff have done either, they've done a fantastic job, they work hard, they're very good at it. I've actually got faith in them that they could bring back a budget with a nil increase because I know they will, that, that's their job, they're there, it is possible, we've just got a little bit less to play with for 12 months, but this is a year like no other year and, you know, I know all the good reasons why we should have a 2% increase. I understand about the rates, the 3.5%. You know, our, our rate system is broken and yes, our state really does need to come to the party and give us some more money. They set the rates, each state sets how you can collect the rates. It, it needs, the mousetrap's broken, it needs fixing and this is a good year for us to push and to see if we can do something about that, but again, that's a long-term solution. And I think all the rest of the, you know, there's a few things I'd like to see changed in this because I think there's a few things that could be highlighted, but I really think this is about care and compassion and listening to the whole community and just once, giving a little bit back to everybody. You know, I know my family are feeling it, the people of Red Cliffs, some families are lucky, they're not, some people have had, you know, if you own a supermarket, you're probably booming, but, you know, there's everybody in our community and I think just give a little bit back and if people don't think that that means anything, go and have a look at the paper, the local paper and people just want to see a little bit of give and, and I think that that's what our community's asking and I think we can do it, I think we can fit it in and I'd like to see us really have a go. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Millen. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the motion? Councillor Echol speaking for.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I really liked some of those, those profound statements, particularly if we want any, if we want any more money, we can go to the state government and ask them. Well, I can tell you that, and the councillor that made that statement has been in council long enough to know that there has to be a catastrophe, there has to be something like a flood, there has to be something like a drought before we get money.
Point of order, could I? We can ask for an increase, not go and ask them for the money, but ask for an increase in rates over the 2% or 3% or whatever they set last year, uh, next year.
Councillor Millen was clearly referring to increasing the rate cap above the government guideline. Thank you.
I'm pleased for that clarification, thank you, Mr, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I think what's missing here is, is the issue about the $1.2 million and, and it has been covered quite well by the mover of this motion, councillor Mottika, but let me tell you just a few dot points in regards to what a hardship relief and recovery approach do and this is the strategy that has been put in place for us to utilise in the, at the appropriate time and as councillor Healy rightfully said, that post-pandemic recovery, we do not know what's going to, we don't even know what's going to happen next week. That is the situation that we're placed in from a governance perspective, but we, we need with that fund to provide support to those most in need, genuinely target the hardship, not allow the Coles and the Woolworths and the like not to pay rates this year when they have absolutely masked an income from this particular community. Also targeted affected businesses via rate rebates, we do have rate rebates, operational subsidies, grants or waiver of fees and charges, just on that, I don't know whether the community know this, but I think we did put out a statement, something to that effect, that it's cost us $700,000 already, $700,000 plus, because I came across that figure only about a month ago in regards to what we need, what we have needed to do to cover this COVID-19. People have got to realise that, you know, it's going to be well over a million dollars by the time this budget goes out and comes, and comes back. Also, the Mildura Regional Development estimate that 1,000 businesses with around 2,500 employees will need support. I think this is what we, what the business community miss out a little bit. It's okay to have your rates not increased, that's good, but it's more important to keep those employees employed. It's, and that's just as beneficial for the viability of that business into the future. Support individuals with rate relief offsets, we have no hardship contingency fund now, so that needs to be and will be looked at. Focus grants for recovery, so we've put a, you know, we've put a hold on some of our grants to the community, let's look at that and let's develop a programme of events and activities to support the community's wellbeing and bringing people in, because what we need, we need cash through those cash registers, we need events, we need things to happen in this locality and particularly from a tourism perspective, you know, if the motion was, you know, put, give the Mildura Regional Development another couple of hundred thousand dollars to go out and do what they do best in bringing people into Mildura, you know, I'd be happy with that, but we need to look after this municipality. That's, that's it, thank you. No, 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 right. So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, you've still got a few seconds left if you want to round that off.
I did, is, is that all right? Popularity, it's a good one. You know what, over the five terms that I've been a councillor, I crawl in as far as the votes are concerned in this community, I just get over the line, so I don't.
You just crossed the line councillor.
I don't make, I don't make decisions for popularity, I make decisions for the community. So I take exception, I take exception to any other councillor saying that they alone care about the community.
I don't think that's the spirit that was.
Well, we all care about the community, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor, your time's up, but thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak against the motion? Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak for the motion? Okay, in that case, before we throw to councillor Mottika to close, I would like to say something to the motion, because I was fraught with danger when the chair says something because I might have to have someone have a crack at me and just make a decision on my, make a decision on my own fault. But can I just say, the majority of rural councils that I'm aware of, through rural cities, Victoria for example, are applying a 2% rate increase and I just looked it up. Their proposals at this stage, because like us, they're still going before council, but Bendigo 2%, Horsham 2%, Shepparton 2%, Latrobe 2%, Wangeratta 2%, Geelong 1.9%, not too sure what's going on there, Warrnambool 2%. The only two councils that aren't doing that is Ararat 0 and they've severely reduced their capital works programmes to cover that and Ballarat 0 and that's given them a $17 million loan borrowing that they've had to, to deal with for a short-term cash flow issue. So the reality is most councils are applying a 2% rate increase and the reason they're doing that is because most of them are taking that money and in our case, it's $1.2 million and we're throwing $300,000 of our own money that we've made savings on, that we're going to create a fund and that fund's going to help people that need it in this COVID-19 issue. It might be business, it might be tourism, it might be anything to try and drive the community forward coming out of COVID-19, but that'll be one and a half billion dollars that will come out of this 2%. $33 per household is the average of what it costs, this 2% for the average household, $33. If someone came to me and said, would you spend $33 to help people in need in this COVID community to, to get out of it, to, to better themselves, to get business running, to get tourism running, whatever it happens to be, would you give $33? Well, I can tell you, I am a rate payer and I would and I will pay that $33 to help my community and that's what that 2% rate increase is going to do, it's going to become a COVID-19 fund so that we can help our community get out of this. Councillor Mottika.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clements. It's always good when you choose to have a chat from the chair, very much appreciated. Look, this is a really dynamic scenario, you know, I agree with parts of what everybody has said here tonight and it hasn't been easy, as councillor Sedgman said, this has been very detailed and ongoing and, you know, we thank our staff for that, but also we thank all you guys for turning up when the time comes to actually go through all this stuff because it's volumes, volumes of pages of information. To close off, I'd like to say, we do care, we are a council that does care, we are out there. Councillor Millen's always out there, he'll take it on the chin, he's got the thickest skin you've ever seen and I respect and admire that like nothing else. Councillor Echol doesn't stop, from five o'clock in the morning onwards, everybody puts in, in their own way and, and our citizens out there, whether they vote for me or Helen or Greg, they put in too and we've put in so we can make a decision that will give us an opportunity to launch into next year, because when that money runs out in September and that cliff looms, we will need every dollar we can get to help bring this community back to what it was prior to COVID-19. I just want to repeat a couple of things, I'm, I'm really gobsmacked about the, the statement for every hundred dollars in taxes paid by Victorian residents, only $3.50 is collected through the, the rates of local government and the other 96 is collected by the two other levels of government and then we supply 30% of the services out of that $3.50 per tax, per tax out of a hundred dollars. Now, that's a huge stat, that's absolutely monstrous and I agree with you in a way, councillor Millen, in a way it is broken, it's massively broken and it's our job to critique the state and the federal governments about what they are and they aren't doing for their communities. I could go in, I just feel like talking tonight, which is a bit weird. So the, the Australian Government Economic Support Package of $259 billion represents a fiscal balance sheet support across the forward estimates of 13.3% of the annual GDP. So what our federal government is spending around the country for COVID is $259 billion. So our budget turnover is $130 million. So let's think about those numbers for a second before we begin to judge where the money comes from or who's benefiting more or who's not benefiting, because in the end, we need to be very nimble, very creative and have a targeted vision for who we want to help with the money we've collected and saved through that 2% increase. Once again, I'd like to thank the staff for the amazing work, thank you Sarah, Sarah and Simon, thank everybody for the passionate debate, that's what we're here for. Sometimes it hurts, but eventually I might end up with thick skin like you, one day, Glenn, so I, I commend it, let's put it to the vote, but this, this is something that will set us up and give us the opportunity to think about how economics works in our community and start asking bigger questions of ourselves, as councillor Millen pointed out, but also of the state and the federal government and what they can do to assist our, you know, far-flung community in Northern Victoria. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, the debate. The debate is now closed. Just for clarity, we are not voting on the budget, we are voting on the draft budget. And this budget, this budget is going out to the public. The public will be given the opportunity to comment and provide feedback on the budget, at which time, at a later point in time, we will then vote on the actual budget itself, just for clarity. And for further clarity, the budget that we're voting on is a budget with a 2% rate increase, which is the cap, the government cap under fair rates. And we are also voting on the material contained within the budget which sets a $1.5 million package towards COVID-19 relief. So we'll move to the vote, all those in favour? All those against, motion is carried. Thank you. I think there was a big sigh of relief just over here somewhere. Okay, item 5.3, public exhibition of the Community and Council Plan for 2017/2021, with a recommendation that council endorse the proposed Community and Council Plan 17 to 21, 2020 update, and authorise a 28-day public exhibition of the plan. Do I have a mover for that? Councillor Millen? Seconder? Councillor Echol? Councillor Healy?
Thank you, I just had a question regarding, sorry, I haven't got it open in front of me, but the measurements in relation to the visitor centre and tourism and Mildura Arts Centre are still listed as yield, as number of visitors? And I just wondered if that could be edited to include, particularly for the Arts Centre, virtual and actual visitors in view of the pandemic? And also, the measurements will be completely different in this year for tourism, the visitor centre, the arts centre? And is that going to be taken into consideration, seeing this is an update plan for the next 12 months? Thank you.
Mr Horson?
Through you, Mr Mayor, it's a really good point, and we'll have to take that on board. Some, there are some stipulations around what we can put in as the measurements, and we'll have to go to our corporate governors to tell us whether we can do that. But certainly, it's a really good point in regard to the unusual year that we've had.
Okay, advice from my compatriot is that we can still proceed with the matter and we can have a look at that after the fact. Okay, so moved by councillor Millen, seconded by councillor Echol. Does anyone wish to speak against the motion? In that case, we'll move to the vote, all those in favour? Motion is carried. Item 5.4 is the Community Sports Infrastructure Stimulus Programme, with a recommendation to the council endorse the submission of an application to the Community Sports Infrastructure Stimulus Programme for $10 million to develop Stage Two of the Mildura South Regional Sporting Precinct, a proven allocation of $1 million required to meet the minimum local financial contribution required under that programme. And note the intention to submit an application for the Mildura Hockey Pitch Upgrade and Expansion and the Mildura Clay Target Club Project, subject to meeting the eligibility criteria of the stimulus programme. Do I have a, no, by councillor Echol? I'll just grab a second or first, I have a second, councillor Brown? Yes, councillor Millen?
With the intention to submit the application for the hockey pitch, et cetera, is there a figure on that of council's contribution?
Mr Horson?
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, and currently that is nil.
Can I ask why we need to ask? Oh, if we can put in a submission when it's going to cost us nothing?
Through you, Mr Mayor. A part of the grant criteria is all applications need to go through through a local government authority, and also to support and assist the club, I guess in kind, with helping them plan and develop the project.
Thank you for that.
Thank you councillor Millen. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the motion? No, we'll move to the vote then, all those in favour? Motion is carried. All right, do we have any urgent business? No urgent business? All right, thank you ladies and gentlemen for your attendance today, and thank you to the public, and I declare this meeting closed. Thank you.